Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Hirschfield. I'm the chairman of the Region 12 Board of Education. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. It's much appreciated. I will call this Regional School District 12 District Meeting Public Hearing to order. Is there a nomination for moderator for tonight's meeting? Mr. Badini?
I nominate Ann Baldwin.
Ann Baldwin, is there a second?
I have a second nomination.
All right. Are there any other nominations? I'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Ann Baldwin as moderator, say aye. Board?
Aye.
Any abstain? Any objection? All right. Ann, I'd like to introduce Ms. Ann Baldwin as our moderator this evening.
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. I would like to read the following. Warning: District Meeting Public Hearing, Regional School District Number 12, towns of Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington. On this date, October 5th, 2015. The electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings at the towns of Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington are hereby warned that a public meeting of Regional School District Number 12 will be held at Shippaug Valley School, 159 South Street in Washington, Connecticut, on this date, Monday, October 5th, 2015, at 7:00 PM for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on the following recommendations by the Board of Education. That $39,491,387 be appropriated for costs related to design, construction, furnishing, equipment, and financing of an agri-science STEM Academy facility to be located on the Shippaug Valley campus at 159 South Street in the town of Washington. Contemplated to include, but not limited to, construction of four buildings, classrooms, and administrative office building, an equine facility, a large and small animal facility, and an equipment garage, as well as renovation of existing shop space at Shippaug Valley School to accommodate the program renovation of chemistry laboratories, collabs, in the existing science wing at the Shippaug Valley School. Site work and improvements and other related work and improvements estimated cost of $37,998 and $367. And B, renovation of the existing science wing at the Shippaug Valley School located on the Shippaug Valley campus at 159 South Street in the town of Washington. Contemplated to provide, but not limited to, chemistry laboratories, one teacher's preparation area, workroom, and a chemical storage area, various items to meet safety code requirements, new equipment, rather, including lab equipment, sinks, hoods, lab stations, ADA compliant lab workstations, technology updates, new flooring, windows, doors, lighting, and HVAC equipment to comply with the ventilation standards and other related work and improvements, and, to the extent of available funds, such other improvements to the existing Shippaug Valley School facilities as are determined by the Board of Education or any building committee delegated such responsibility by the Board of Education. Estimated cost of $1,493,020. The Board of Education or any building committee or committees delegated all and any portion of such responsibility by the Board of Education shall be authorized to determine the scope and the particulars of each project and may reduce or modify the scope of each project as desirable, and the entire appropriation may be spent on the projects as so reduced or modified. The district anticipates receiving grants from the State Department of Education for an estimated approximate 70.2 percent of the aggregate costs of the projects for a resulting estimated aggregate net cost of the projects to the district of $11,751,921. That $39,491,387 in bonds and temporary notes of the district be authorized to finance the appropriation. The amount of the bonds or notes authorized shall be reduced by the amount of grants, if any received, by the district for projects and not separately appropriated to pay project costs. That the chairman and treasurer or such officer or body delegate such authority by the Board of Education be authorized to require the district and its member towns to comply with the applicable federal income tax requirements for tax-exempt bonds and to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information. Number four, that the Board of Education be authorized to approve the entering into of contracts for the projects and the Board of Education or such office or body to whom the Board delegates such authority be authorized to approve the expenditure of said appropriation and other such matters as it deems desirable or necessary to complete the projects. Number five, that the appropriation and the bond and temporary note authorization be submitted to referendum vote of the electors and the citizens who are qualified to vote in the member towns of the district. Dated at Washington Depot, Connecticut, this 29th day of September 2015, James Hirschfield, Chairman, Board of Education, Regional School District Number 12. Mr. Hirschfield, Mr. Board Chair.
Thank you, Ann. And I'm sorry that you folks had to sit through that, but it is a legal requirement that we have to read the warning of the public hearing. So, thank you very much for that. At this time, I would like to introduce the members of the Board of Education and some other guests that we have. I can't make sure I'm not see all the way down the table, but as far as the Board of Education, we've got Mr. Peter Tagley, Ms. Emily Hibbert, Mr. Michael Sinatra, Ms. Jennifer Pody, I'm sorry, Ms. Anthony Amato, Rebecca Devine, Michelle Gora, Gregory Cava, and Valerie Anderson. We've also have, as guests tonight, Mr. Charlie Booz, an architect with Castle Booze Architects, Mr. Gary Brochu, the Board of Education Council with Shipman &amp; Goodwin, Mr. Doug Gillette, Bond Council for the Board with Dave Pitney, also our Finance Officer, Mr. Robert Geeson. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Patricia Cosentino.
Hi, everybody. I'm glad you could get out here tonight. This is very, very exciting. I'm just thrilled to see so many wonderful faces from the community. I think you're going to be really impressed with the presentation tonight regarding the Agri-Science STEM Program. And so, we're going to start with our PowerPoint. This program is to ensure a solid, robust high school for not only our children, but their children and their children, and to really revitalize the community, not only of Region 12, but of Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington. The agenda for the PowerPoint, and really for the evening, is a description of what the Ag-STEM Program is. So, we're going to be doing that in the PowerPoint. Overview of the facilities and the campus. The Ag-STEM financials, which I know everyone is always very interested in. Question and answer period. And then, after the public hearing, we will have a Board of Education meeting, and that's when we will set the date for the referendum. So, you're always welcome to stay for the whole evening. We want to let you know that we have a lot of experience behind Ag-STEM, just in the district. Kim Gallo, as you all know, the principal of the high school, worked for many years at Nanowog. Bob Geeson, same thing, many, many years at Nanowog. And we have been working in conjunction with Bill Davenport, who is director at Nanowog, to really help solve this problem that the state has of not having enough seats for all the students who want to be part of an agri-science STEM Program. So, we thank them, and we thank everyone who has participated in the meetings that we've had and in presenting tonight. I am very excited to stand here as the superintendent of Shippaug. In the spring, we had some really wonderful S-Back assessments that came back. It was the first year that all of the Connecticut high schools and elementary schools, but we're concentrating on Shippaug right now, took the S-Back in the 11th grade. S-Back is Smarter Balance Assortium, sorry, Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. And our students did really, really well. And they did really well because we have a wonderful staff, high-quality curriculum, and students who really understand the importance of being critical thinkers, problem solvers, and taking school seriously. So, you'll just see here, in ELA, which is English Language Arts, we had 86 percent of our students at the mastery level. That was number one in our area, which is called DIRK, out of 19 schools. And we were fifth in the state out of 131 high schools. That is an amazing result, and we are very, very proud of that. In math, we had a mastery level of 52 percent. We were number three out of 19 in our region. And we were 21st out of 128 schools in Connecticut. Again, excellent results, and we are really about continuous improvement. So, you will see that as we move forward. Everything's always about getting better, getting better. So, we're really excited about that. I want you to look at this slide carefully. This represents some of the very competitive schools that our students have gotten into in the last couple of years. We are really very proud of our alumni. They work very hard when they leave Shippaug. They go on to do wonderful things out in the community, but they always know where their home is. Shippaug is very, very important to them. It's important to us. And our students get into highly competitive colleges. And so, when you send your child to Shippaug, you know that you are preparing them for a future that's really going to be a wonderful future. They're going to be very well-prepared to go out into the world. I think Mr. Hirschfield's going to come up and just talk about the journey thus far.
This proposal, I'm going to speak about our journey to Ag-STEM. How did we get here? This proposal that the Region 12 Board of Education is presenting you tonight arises out of three distinct challenges. The first challenge is the most important to this Board of Education and to Region 12, is that the student population of Region 12 is declining. It's no secret. It's well-known. Our primary concern is the quality of education we can offer to our students in Region 12 in the future. Another concern is that the agri-science program at Nanowog, Region 14, which is the closest to us, turns away up to 60 students per year, qualified students per year, because they simply don't have the physical space to educate them. Which leads to a third concern or problem in that the State Board of Education is not meeting its obligation to provide the option of this type of education for all Connecticut students, which they are obligated to do. So, we believe that this proposal, the Region 12 Agri-Science STEM Academy, addresses all of these concerns, but most importantly, the large problem facing our students in Region 12 regarding the quality of the educational offerings available to our students and the continued viability of the Shippaug Valley School. We believe that this proposal is a win-win-win situation. It needs to be stated, and I will state it loud and clear, that the Region 12 Board of Education believes that the Shippaug Valley School is an excellent school and is worth saving, and that this is an excellent and exciting plan to do that. The Board of Education is committed to keeping the Shippaug Valley School open and to keeping Region 12 a K-12 district. A lot of work has gone into this proposal and to making this proposal a reality. There were presentations to the Connecticut Legislature. We've had the help of several of our local legislators and even those who have no direct connection to Region 12. So, the first step was that with that proposal and a lot of work that was done presenting it to the legislature, the Connecticut Legislature earlier this year passed into law a funding appropriation for this program. The minimum appropriation, minimum, excuse me, appropriations is 80 percent reimbursement for new construction and approximately 20 percent reimbursement for our existing science labs, which are included in this proposal, and that will be gone into more detail shortly. Thereafter, after the legislature passed the funding appropriation, the governor signed the funding appropriation into law. Now, it is up to us, to you, the voters of Region 12. Region 12 must pass this referendum approving our commitment to pay our local share of this project by the voters of a majority of the Region 12, like our annual budget votes. It is not required that a majority of each of the three towns of the region pass the funding referendum. The referendum must be passed prior to November 15 of this year, or the state funding that's been appropriated will be lost. We will be unable to go back to the well and seek the funding again. It is before us. The funds have been appropriated. We must act. There is a sense of urgency, but also a sense of great opportunity. Opportunity is knocking at our door. On behalf of the Region 12 Board of Education and the students of Region 12, both present and future, I implore you to vote yes to approve the funding referendum, which will come before you in November. And now, I'd like to reintroduce Dr. Cosentino and our Shippaug Valley School Principal, Ms. Kimberly Gallo, to take you through the Agri-Science STEM Program in detail.
We are going to show you a seven-minute video. This video was put together by one of our staff members, Karen Files, with the help of some other people, but she did a great job to really point out what is agri-science, what is STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and why. Why should we do this? So, seven minutes, I think it's going to be really well worth your time, and then we'll give you some pointers about what's going on with the program. So, we can show the video.
When most people hear the term, an image of farm fields, crops, and livestock come to mind. But careers in agri-science span a wide range of skill sets, from high-end sciences, engineering, and technology, to healthcare, nutrition, and even business. Think about the chemistry, biology, and engineering needed to research, create, and bring to market foods, nutritional supplements, and pharmaceutical products needed to keep humans and animals healthy. Veterinary sciences have moved beyond your family vet to specialists, such as chiropractic, dentistry, radiology, anesthetists, and even oncologists. There are also numerous careers in food inspection and regulation to help keep us safe and make us happy through floral design, landscape and turf management, and numerous recreational activities.
There is a growing interest in looking at the nexus between food, between energy, the environment, water, people, our communities. And so, how, when you look at all these things working together, how can we look at the big system of that and see how our science can help solve those problems? Because they're very complicated.
Students in the state of Connecticut have the option to attend an agri-science high school as part of the state's school choice initiative. Using agri-science as the vehicle, students are exposed to a three-point model of education, focusing first on a rigorous academic program, including high-end science, technology, engineering, and math classes. Participation in the National FFA Student Organization demonstrates leadership and civic responsibility. And third, a supervised agricultural experience will apply and help learn new skills while on the job. What benefits does participation in an agri-science program have for our young people? This video takes a look at the career outlook for the vast field of agri-science from a Connecticut perspective.
Sciences are very rich and cut across so many topics. I think when we think of agriculture, we think of these big rural environments, but we're going to have very high-tech agriculture right in the middle of our cities, and it's a great opportunity. And it really offers us an opportunity to bring a whole new food supply to those over markets. And we do have nurseries. We have greenhouses. We have people who work with turf and recreational fields for sporting, you know, so all of the football fields, baseball fields around the country are managed by people who come through College of Agriculture. And talk about a great job. I mean, imagine being the groundskeeper for Fenway Park or Yankee Stadium. I mean, it's just, you know, those are fantastic jobs, and you wouldn't think of that as traditional agriculture.
The 22 million jobs in a broad field of agriculture and the increasing in biosecurity and biosafety and food safety and food science, and so, they open up many more jobs and opportunities that are out there for the students as well.
In the state of Connecticut, there's a greenhouse that provides most of the East Coast, all the Home Depots, with all of their plant product. So, we actually teach the kids in a real work-based environment. We have multiple greenhouses that the students actually work in and grow their own product.
I had one person from a larger company tell me, the one thing they liked about the Ag students was the business information they received in their record-keeping, that no other student organization or no other career and technical education area does. These students learn to keep records, their financial records, their records of supplies and materials. So, many of our students, I know many former FFA members are working for some of the larger industries in their business area, in the sales area. Many of these companies love the FFA students because of their ability to speak and their ability to encourage people to use products that they're marketing. So, we see many of our former FFA and Agri-science students go into sales and marketing for some of the different companies.
The agri-science program in general has taught me so much, from just skills in agriculture. This has been really helpful with cultivation and horticulture, landscape management, learning about different plant identification, tool identification, weed pests, things like that within the classroom. And then, outside of the classroom, learning things like leadership, team-building, public speaking. Just learned so many different types of things, not just about agriculture, but the program in general teaches you really character and leadership qualities as well.
The agriculture program has the opportunity to teach the kids skills and knowledge in the classroom and then figure out a way to apply it into the real world.
We're using agriculture as a teaching resource, but the students, as Emily mentioned, it's leadership, it's citizenship, it's cooperation, it's coming up with a plan and then figuring out how to make it happen. And I think that that, those skills are transferable wherever you go. The students figure out how to problem-solve. And so, whether you're talking about animals, or plants, or natural resources, it's that problem-solving, that that's the real key to learning. So, no matter where they go after high school, they have that skill set.
We have probably 85 percent of post-secondary education coming out of our program here. You can also come out of our program with upwards of 25 to 30 college credits, what we call ECE courses, Early College Experience. So, not only the hands-on component with SAE, but also the curriculum and academics that they can have. So, they're, like you were saying, when you hire them, they're well-rounded students that really have a leg up.
Why agri-science? Stretching well beyond the borders of Connecticut, the problems facing our world today center on developing sustainable ways to feed, shelter, and power a growing population while conserving the precious natural resources of our planet. The answers to these problems will lie with a future generation of professional scientists, engineers, technologists, business, and financiers. Already, employment in these fields have grown by 4.5 percent since 2005 and are projected to grow another 4.9 percent in the next five years. Students participating in an agri-science program will have a four-year leg up on their peers and will enter college ready to tackle these global issues.
For those of you that have not met me, my name is Kim Gallo, and I have the honor of serving as principal of Shippaug Valley School. What I'd like to talk to you about tonight are the questions that we've received in the community about why we should do this, what is the value to our current students, what is the value to our community? Why Ag-STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math? You saw a few of the future careers that would be available to our students. Those of you who eat, those, sure, those of you who want to continue to do so, those of you who wish to live in a land that is propagating and is beautiful and is sustainable, those of you who wish to look at the water and to look at what it can do for us as a population, all of these and more are what looks, what is looked at in an agri-science program. When you take your vitamin in the morning, someone from agri-science figured out how to put those vitamins in that little capsule that's easy to take. When you are in an urban area in our growing population and you know that food will be sustainable and that you will be able to continue to feed our children and our nation, you're talking about agri-science. Exposure to STEM courses at the high school level exposes all students to a variety of college majors and careers. The areas of study include plant science and horticulture, natural resources and the environment, biotechnology, veterinarian animal sciences, aquaculture and marine sciences, food science, and agricultural mechanics and engineering. In addition to these wide and varied subjects, our students will look at the business and research and development involved in keeping these agri-science careers active. So, what are the benefits to our children? First, you need to know, this program's going to benefit all of our children. Shippaug Agri-Science STEM Program will be integrated with our regular high school. Students in the middle school will be giving courses, little snippets to get them excited about some of the curriculum that they're going to be coming up against if they'd like to join the program. Just like a college, if I'm a student in the regular core program, not an agri-science student, but I'm interested in maybe veterinarian or plant and horticulture, if there are openings in those classes, I can take them as electives. So, this is going to allow our school to offer so many more robust electives and allow students to be in a learning environment that's real and relevant and has worlds to lifelong learning opportunity as they move forward in their careers. One of the concerns we have in the region is that students are with the same group of students every year. This program's going to allow us to bring almost 200 new students to Shippaug, which will allow all of our students to mingle in social opportunities, the theater, the arts, sports, and in the classroom, increasing the discourse, increasing the conversations. It's really going to be very powerful for our students. And most importantly, for me and Kim, I was also a high school principal. Our main job as high school principals is preparing our students for life after high school. They should have a plan the day after they graduate of what they want to do. This is really important when you think about your kids and wanting them to be successful in life. And this offers more pathways for students to be able to really take the next step in a field that they are passionate about. The other piece I just want to bring into this is we're really focusing a lot tonight on agri-science and STEM because they're connected. But we also, currently in our high school, have a very robust STEM program, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. We have Project Lead the Way, which is a pre-engineering program in the middle school. We want to continue engineering in the high school. We want to bring more level of mathematics classes and science classes. So, as we move forward, you will see that one of the benefits of bringing the agri-science program to Shippaug is to increase the amount of AP, which is Advanced Placement with the College Board, classes to our students. And this is for all students. So, right now, we have a nice array, as you can see, currently available, of courses that we offer. Some are through VHS, which is virtual high school. Students take them online, and some are in real-time classes. So, you see, we have bio and calculus and physics, French, psychology, Spanish, studio art. But with the addition of more staff members in the STEM program and more students, we'll be able to offer more AP courses. So, we're hoping definitely to add chemistry, statistics, environmental sciences, and Calc BC. BC, but really offer students the opportunity to take those high-level classes in the AP and then also as UConn classes. So Kim can talk to that.
And with the addition of the agri-science program, try to think about how that would enhance our already lighthouse program of senior project. Any of our students would have access to this equipment, would be encouraged in this way. Try to imagine in a science class, when a teacher is performing an experiment that has to do with biotechnology or any of the areas that we've mentioned, if they reach out to their agri-science colleagues and work together with those students, how will that enhance our classrooms? And our students will also be able to look at the early college experience offerings that are offered in an agri-science program. These courses give students a college transcript to take with them. When you're talking about a UConn course, and it's a course in any of the areas that we've talked about, it's not something that maybe the college will accept and maybe they will not, it's an actual transcript. Our teachers are trained UConn professors. We already have this in the areas of literature and, thank you very much, European history, I couldn't get past modern in my head. We already have those courses, and our students already walk out with those transcripts. This gives them more. Oftentimes, members of the public want to ask us, who will we be taking? And I can absolutely let you know about the selective process that happens from my experience as an educator in Region 14. We had a small committee. I was the assistant principal and then the interim principal. We had the director of the agri-science program, a counselor, a teacher, and the principal. Each of us read every single student's application and scored them blindly and independently. We looked at areas such as a demonstrated interest in an Ag program, a strong overall transcript, these are strong students, exemplary behavior and attendance, teacher and personal letters of recommendation. So at the young age of eighth grade, they are going out and soliciting that support for themselves, another important life experience, as well as a personal interest essay. After all of these things were reviewed and scored, we then picked the best of the best. We intend to continue to do so. At this time, I'd like to introduce board member and parent, Michelle Gora, who will talk to you about the benefits to your communities. Michelle?
Thanks, Kim. So a lot of people have been very excited when we talk about the agri-science program. They can see how this would benefit the students here in the building. But they continually ask us, how does this benefit our community? Why should we invest in this? Why should we care about this? The first thing I want to talk about is a stable, vibrant, and attractive high school. We all know that our towns, our boards of selectmen, our zoning commissions, everyone's been working on trying to figure out how to get young families moving into our towns. It affects not only our schools, we all know how that affects our towns, whether it's the volunteer fire department or any of the other activities happening in our communities. We need young families. And having a thriving and successful high school is a piece of that picture. It will help attract families and keep the ones that we have. So this is good for our communities. The other piece is up here on the campus, we already use the high school, people come and swim in the pool, they come run on the track. Outside organizations use this auditorium, it's the largest one we have in our region. But these new facilities will expand what we can do for our communities. We will be able to offer classes to adults, the experts in their field will be offering classes as adult continuing ed, it's just something that is part of the curriculum. So in the evenings, you could come and learn about organic gardening, or composting, cheesemaking, there are all sorts of classes, and they are chosen by the interest of the public. So there's that component. There also will be the equine facility, which between the indoor and the outdoor facilities will be able to host events. So that's a new addition to our community that'll be very exciting. I know a lot of people are looking forward to that. There's also the exposure of our communities to people outside. So when we're having things like these horse shows up at the equine center, or the students have a soccer game, we are now going to have the families of these two hundred extra students driving into our towns, through our towns, to come and watch and participate. They're going to have to stop at the market and get something for dinner. I know I do that when we're at an away game. They're going to stop and get a cup of coffee because their child just texted and told them they're going to be thirty minutes late. They're going to be driving through our beautiful towns and seeing our houses and thinking maybe they might like to shorten their commute. So exposure, it's giving our towns exposure. There are also lots of programs happening in the agri-science program, plant sales, Mother's Day, Christmas, where people will be coming in to buy plants. So there are other community-centered events that will be happening. You can see up on the slide here, farm-to-table. GW's already said that they would love to participate in a farm-to-table event, or long-term, if that were available. So that's, there are a lot of exciting opportunities for our communities. The agri-science program also has an advisory council that is made up of the people from the businesses in these areas, our local farmers, our horse barns, our veterinarians. And they work with the students, they have them intern in their program. So there's this symbiotic relationship between the high school and the relevant businesses. So there's exposure for them, there's networking, so there are a lot of ways that this program will bring some new life to our communities besides just our schools. All right, I'd like to introduce now Greg Kava, who's a board member and chair of our facilities committee. He's going to go through the facilities and what's being proposed.
Thank you, Michelle. If you could go to the next slide. Those of you familiar with the Chappagh campus know that it's up here on South Street. Most of it's in the town of Washington, little bits of the town of Roxbury. And there's also another portion of the property that's on the other side of South Street that goes down here where we have our soccer field, and actually, that's where our septic system is located. Two of them, both very important but hardly interchangeable. And what we've got is the current Chappagh building you're sitting in right now is right here. The auditorium is right here, this is where we're physically sitting presently, the gymnasium is over here, this is the media center, the library, the academic classrooms, primary academic classrooms are here, the art facilities are down this hallway, the music is in here, the theater, of course, program is both in the theater and also directly behind it. And we have some classrooms up in the far end of the building here, which are no longer being used, but were formerly used for industrial arts and auto mechanics, and there was some, one of them was used for some art projects, no longer is. And so this is the building that we have here. And what we're proposing to do is to add to this building a primary building right here, which will be for the agri-science. This is your primary agri-science classrooms, labs, biotech labs, and facilities. This is where we will be having this program. We're also going to add classrooms in these unused areas here, will be added to the agri-science facility. This is where we're going to have both hydroponic, aquaponic, and sustainable food production programs that will be conducted in these classrooms here and some of the classrooms in this main building. There are three greenhouses on the back of this building. Then, this building will also serve as a primary entrance, student entrance and student drop-off entrance for the site, and will be connected directly to the building down the hallway that currently goes between the music and theater facilities and the pool, the locker rooms, and gymnasium. In addition, we're going to build a large and small animal building right here. This large and small animal building will house our programs and many of the types of animals. There'll be rabbits, probably ferrets, pigs, and other small animals, maybe cows as well. So there are some large animals in here. And then the next building we're going to build is the equine center. This is a full equine center, and we'll have a full program. It'll have, the back of the building will house stalls and tack rooms and hay storage and whatnot. And this main area will be an indoor riding facility, an indoor riding ring right here. In addition, there'll be an outdoor riding facility right here, an outdoor riding ring, and finally, a paddock or pasture for the animals. Behind the large animal building is also a turnout area for the animals. But in addition to these facilities, we also have a garage down here where we're going to be able to collect into one building all of the vehicles and other equipment that's used for both the agri-science program and also our core program. So in addition, there are going to be many site improvements. And so let me talk about those a little bit. One of the things that we're able to do is when you come into Chappagh, if you have children here, you'll know what this is about, you come in the entrance and there's a sign. The first thing you meet is a sign that directs you to not come here if there are buses during certain hours of the day, because the buses come up here, drop the students off in front of the school, and then the buses exit the Ring Road, which is actually right here, and exit out. And we don't want conflicts between cars and buses. Well, one of the things this project is going to allow us to do is to create a completely isolated bus entrance right here to drop the students off and then circle around and leave. And this means that parents and others will now be able to come into this parking area, which will be expanded to much larger than it is now. People that come here like to park here, and then, of course, the spaces fill up quickly and they park along the road, and they park on the grass, and they park on the sidewalk sometimes even. Well, this is now going to be an expanded parking area, which is a great opportunity. This is where people want to park more than will be able to do it. There won't be conflicts with the buses, so people will be able to come in and out here even when the buses are on-site. Going around the building, it's going to be a campus atmosphere. There are going to be parking facilities for both the main agri-science area as well as the agri-science sales area. You've heard about the possible sales, plant sales and other sales that'll be conducted, and it'll have its own parking area. The sales facility will be right in here. And the other nice thing is we'll be able to keep this isolated from the rest of the building when there are weekend or other events that are going on for sales. The other thing we're going to do is to proceed around here, there'll be roads and pathways that allow us to have better access and better usability of the entire site. We'll also be able to make certain improvements. Because we're putting this building here and this building, we're going to be removing the tennis courts from here. They're going to be relocated down to this end of the building with their own parking. So we're going to have new tennis courts as a result of this. Also, up here in the athletic fields, we're able to maintain our fields, we'll be turning the baseball field in a slightly different direction. But we're also going to be adding, have the ability to have a second soccer field up, we'll be adding a second soccer field. And so we're actually able to increase our athletic fields, and in short, make much better use of the entire site. It will be a much tighter and much better utilized campus. We're also going to have a walking facility. It literally will be a path that will circle the athletic fields, actually, it's out here. You can see it. It will circle the athletic fields, and as a result, if you have children on the fields and you want to walk, some people walk on the track while they're waiting for practices and other things to be over, they'll now have a place to walk around the fields. In addition, it'll make the fields more accessible to our students as well. So that's part of these campus improvements. Now, in addition to these improvements, you've heard about the science rooms and labs. We currently have five labs in this area right here. We're not adding to the building, we're merely gutting this area and replacing those labs which were built and last redone in, I think, in nineteen seventy or seventy-one, somewhere in there. We're now going to be replacing those with modern labs as part of this. And this is very important because if we were not doing the agri-science facility, if we didn't do that, and we had to replace these labs, and it's pretty clear we're going to have to replace these labs when the results committed from the study of our, the organization that accredits us, they're going to require that these labs be upgraded and replaced. Were we to do that alone, that would be something like a $4.4 million project, and it would receive about 20% in state reimbursement. Because half of this is necessitated by the Ag, half of this is justifiable by the increased AgSTEM science facility, we're able to get an 80% reimbursement on half of this. It's going to substantially reduce the cost of the district of doing something we have to do. The loading dock back here that we're replacing is also going to receive 80% reimbursement, and it's something that we would have had to done, it was something we wanted to do for our capital plan. Why don't we look at the next slide, and I'll take you through. We've highlighted some items that we would probably, we would have to do, we would want to do for the overall improvement of this building that will now be realized as a result of the agri-science changeover, the agri-science addition to our curriculum. That addition will allow us to, again, have new tennis courts relocated to here, it will allow us to have the parking improvements I talked about, the bus and car isolation for greater safety that we talked about. It will allow us to have a better entrance, close to the parking lot, that students use closer to the building, a better parent, this would be a good parent drop-off right here. It'll allow us a better entrance, it will allow us substantial improvements to our athletic fields and the creation of additional areas, and of course, the new science labs. What we are basically able to do is we're able to save a significant portion of the cost of the science labs, and we're able to take about $2 to $3 million of capital items, get them done as part of this program with substantial state reimbursement for that effort, something we would not be able to accomplish otherwise. So as a facility, this allows us to make a substantial move toward the upgrading and modernizing of this facility, and we'll go hand in glove with some of the things we have been doing in our regular budget process in order to bring Chappagh into the 21st century. And I think at this point, I'd like to introduce Anthony Amato, a board member and the chairman of our AgSTEM Steering Committee. Thank you, Greg.
So as I believe was mentioned earlier, this would be the 20th agricultural center or academy in the state of Connecticut. And all the darkened towns are where the existing centers are. And you'll notice some towns in blue and some towns in green. The towns, all of those towns together are currently being serviced by Nonowog Region 14 Center. These are referred to as sending towns. So these are towns that have a unique relationship with their respective Ag Center and are required to send their kids to those towns. Now, the green will stay with Nonowog, and the blue would become the sending towns for Chappagh's program. Next slide. As you can see, these are the towns that would be in our sending areas. We'll probably, before this is over, we'll get Bethel to agree. That was just a timing issue, otherwise, we believe Bethel would have agreed a lot sooner. But we do have six, and again, these towns are aligned to our district. So questions have come up in the past about, you know, can they send their kids to somebody else's program? The answer is no. Can they decide to leave? The answer is no. So anything that happens with the sending towns has to be a bilateral agreement between us and that sending town. The way this split was made, the run-up to the application process involved first, obviously, sitting down with Nonowog, who agreed, as Jim said earlier, to split the program apart because they weren't being able to meet their demand. We had to go to each sending town and get their boards to approve coming into this prospective program. And then the state wanted to see that evidence as part of their approval of this program. So this is very tightly controlled, it is not a variable unless we want it to be as we go forward. Next slide. So common questions, how were So common question is how is the program paid for? So each of these sending towns will have students who, as Kim said earlier, will fill out an application and express their desire to come into the program. If they're successful and they're admitted into the program, the sending towns have to pay tuition of $68.23 per student per year. On top of that, the state government provides a grant, $3,200 per student per year. So together, the tuition for an AgSTEM out-of-district is roughly a little over $10,000. Now, our students who decide to come into this program will also be eligible for the state grant. Obviously, we're paying their tuition already, but they'll be eligible for the state grant. Now, the Connecticut Board of Ed and the legislature control both those components. It's not up to the sending district to decide what they feel like paying in any particular year, nor can we decide that we want to increase our tuition. So the state comes in, they regulate both numbers, and over the years, those numbers have moved up, not with any regular frequency, but they have moved up over the years and do steadily increase. Questions about who supports the school in the off-hours? The students and the teachers. The teachers that are in the Ag program, I believe, are 11-month contracts. So they're here throughout the year, and they cover the holidays and the summer. And the children in the program are also, this is part of their internships, to take care of the animals and take care of the plants, the fish, whatever happens to be in these buildings during the off-hours. So it's completely self-funded. So there will not be any outside labor to come in, barn managers, stable managers, et cetera. None of that is factored. And that is not a notion that we have, but that is a standard course of operating procedure for all the other 19 state programs. As long as we get closer to the numbers. So the program itself, the Ag facilities, as Greg pointed out, is roughly $38 million. The science labs are 1.4. So we are, by doing the science labs in conjunction with this project, there is an inherent savings. That's an advantage we have, money that the district is saving by combining these two together. So the total project is $39.5 million. Now, we talked about the state shares. So throughout the course of the program, we were talking about 80% state reimbursement. The AgSTEM facilities, more or less, is getting an 80% share from the state of Connecticut. That is the money that's been appropriated that Jim talked about earlier. The science labs, a portion of those are being covered at 80% because there is a direct connection to the agri-science program. The balance of the labs are being covered at the more standard 20%. So when you put all the bits and pieces together, it blends out to 70% is being covered by the state of the total bill, and 30% is the local share. Our local share together is 11.75. That's what you'll see in the referendum question. And the breakdown by our towns, I'll read them off, Roxbury is 33% or 3.9 million of the 11.7. Bridgewater is 2.4 or 21%, and Washington is 5.4 or 46%. These are the same proportions in which the school budget is apportioned back to the respective towns. And when you add interest, which unfortunately, we have to pay, the Ag program is going to be covered with a 20-year bond. The labs would be covered by a six-year loan. So together, with interest, it's 15.65. Next slide. So when you add all these pieces together, what do the numbers look like? Well, we looked at it two different ways. We looked at one model with inflation. We looked at one model with inflation on both sides. The costs were inflated and assumed that every five years, we would see an increase from the state in both the grant and the tuition rate. No inflation, over the life of the bond. It's a little over $8 million of surplus funding that this program would generate that would come back into the general fund. If you look at the effect that that would have on your budget, it averages out to 1.7% reduction in the annual budget over the 25 years. And for those who just remembered the previous chart where we said a 20-year bond, that's because it's actually 25 when you include the construction period. So it's like building a house. You have a construction loan, and then the bond kicks in the day you take ownership. That's the 20 years altogether. It's a 25-year life, which, that explains, if you had a question there. Of course, we know that there will be some inflation, and we ran another model with inflation. And that more or less comes out to a net positive after the 25 years, but for all intensive purposes, it's not increasing the budget nor is necessarily decreasing the budget. So somewhere in between is probably reality in terms of what we guessed for inflation versus what we'll really see in inflation. We were looking at inflation of 2.5% a year compounded, which is not what it's been running, but we thought it was a fair way of projecting out the costs. So when you put these two pieces together, also appreciate, I'll bring you back to a point Greg made, there is about $6 to $7 million worth of capital improvements. And again, the labs are an absolute. If this referendum should fail, we have to go back and get those labs fixed. We just finished the NISAC accreditation process, and we've got an early unofficial but early indication there that our science labs will be written up as a deficiency, and if not fixed, they will pull our accreditation as a school. So if we don't do this, the next day, we'll be coming back and having to deal with the science labs, but it'll be $4 million instead of the 1.6. So we are getting value. Now, if you look at that cumulative number over the 25 years, chart is a little to digest, but I'll do my best to try to walk you through it. Greg, is the pointer working, Greg?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that thing. The other thing. Sorry, I just got my things mixed up. So let me take you through the chart. So the blue line here is the effect that this program will have on our annual school budget with no inflation. So we just took today's budget, which is approximately $21.5 million, no inflation. We flatlined that by definition, and you could see the effect that the program has on the annual budget. The red line is the 21.5 inflated 2.5% a year, carried out for the 25 years. So you're seeing here is a net change to the budget. So if we assume that we'll see a 2.5% increase year over year, that's why the line is flat. When you look at the green line, it's the effect of that, on that steady 2.5% budget. You would see in the early years, when we're going through construction, it will increase the budget some. Other years, it's flat. Other years, it's actually decreasing the budget. So when you look at the ups and the downs, and if you accumulate all of the pluses and minuses, that's how you get back to the previous chart of $700,000 for the with-inflation model. And when you look at the no-inflation model, this space above here basically adds up to $8 million over the 25 years. But to put this in perspective, when you're looking at this area right here, which is year three in the program, we are in our second year of construction. The bond or construction loan will cost us $226,000. When you take that $226,000 and you look at it on a per-household basis, it turns out to be 10 cents a day for one year per household. So again, keep that in mind. It's a relatively small impact to the budget. And we're not even saying at this point that that would even materialize because there's other things we can do with the annual budgets that we still haven't begun to even think about or talk about. We have funds that are available that we could use to offset this. There are other dynamics that may be happening in any given year which can completely negate that potential increase. So at this point, I'd like to hand it over back to Jim. We'll talk to you about the referendum question.
Okay, so what you have here is when you go into the voting booth in November, this is what you're going to see. This is the referendum question, and this has been framed with the assistance and the direction of our bond council. Shall Regional School District Number 12 appropriate $39,491,387 for costs of design, construction, furnishing, equipping, and financing of a new agri-science STEM academy to be located on Shapog Valley Campus in the town of Washington, and of a renovated science wing and other facilities improvements, other facilities improvements at the Shapog Valley School, and authorize the issue of bonds and temporary notes to finance the portion of the appropriation, not afraid from grants? The estimated net project cost is $11,751,921. So it's important to understand, although we must ask for a referendum to pass for the gross amount of $39,491,387, if it does pass, again, with the money that's been appropriated from the state, the net to the region is $11,751,921. Next. All right, we're going to move on now to opening the public hearing to the public. You're welcome to speak. I'll turn it over to Ann Baldwin, please.
Again, thank you all for turning out tonight. The communication process does change once the referendum date is set. So tonight is really, this is your meeting. This is why they call it a public hearing. So what we'd like to ask in respect to everyone who took the time to come here tonight and see this great presentation, if you could, please keep your comments to three minutes. I am going to run a clock, and I'll do something crazy if you go over. And then, should we get through everybody and you have additional questions, those questions will be entertained at that point. Should you have a question tonight that somebody can't answer, someone will get back to you with the answer to your question. But we're really confident in the fact that we believe that we have the expertise here tonight to handle most of your questions. So this is the podium. If you would please come up to the podium, line up behind the person in front of you. This, again, is your meeting. We'd like you to state, please, your name, the town that you're representing, and again, if you would very respectfully keep your comments, you know, two, three minutes. And we also want to hear, you know, just, you don't have to ask a question. If you want to reinforce something that you saw here tonight, please. We want the good, the bad, and everything in between. So, sir, if you're first in line, welcome to the podium. Again, please state your name and the town.
Yes, my name is John Boniuto. I'm from Washington. And three quick questions.
Okay, could you just speak closer into the microphone, please? And everybody, keep that in mind because sometimes the audience can't hear. Thank you.
Jim mentioned that the referendum question would include the $11.75 million for our portion of the project. And I just want to know why the interest on that wouldn't be included? In other words, the total project is actually going to cost the taxpayers 15.6 million. Is that correct?
Okay, we've got Bob Geeson, who is our business official.
Doug Gillett.
Whoever wants to answer, and if you could come up to the podium and answer it. Thank you.
I'm Doug Gillett from Dave Pitney.
Could you get closer to the microphone, please? And restate your name and where you're from?
Doug Gillett from Dave Pitney. We're bond council of the district. The net cost does not reflect interest on the financing because interest on the financing is a budgetary, a current budgetary, operating budget cost, not a capital cost to the project.
Okay, what about the safety valve for potential cost overruns with this whole project? How do we address those if they occur?
Could you repeat the question, please?
How do we address cost overruns if it runs over $38 million?
Okay, and whoever's going to answer from the panel, please, just grab one of the microphones in front of you, put it up nice and close to your face, and answer that. Sir, that does your time limit. We'd be glad to answer that question. Thank you for your question.
Okay, yeah, I was going to say Greg Kava, I'm a member of the Board of Education. The project plans on which this was based included a number of contingencies for cost increases, for environmental issues, and other things that might be encountered. Those were built into the cost, the $39 million total cost of the project.
All right, thank you, sir, for your questions. Again, once-
Can I just have one more quick one? They answered, they took up some of my time answering my question, basically. For the cost analysis, and I've seen this in one of the handouts, you have, for the 2020 school year, the first full year of all four grades being in the program, the cost for 191 in-region students, per student, that's after the fixed cost, is $23,053. You have for the agri-science, 196 students, the cost for them is $4,859. That's quite a disparity. And I've asked this question to three of our board members and also the superintendent. And they claim that it is going to cost nothing once the students pass from the Agri-STEM Academy into the core curriculum. And I just want to know how that can be done for nothing, 196 students, and you're telling me it's not going to cost anything extra? Thank you.
Thank you. Who will be addressing that?
Slide 30.
Could you go to slide 30, please?
32.
32?
Okay, well, I didn't see it. So this is a breakdown of the incremental cost to bring in these students. And it was done on an incremental basis on the very important premise that the high school is here to stay. This is not an option of deciding if the high school should go, or if we're a private institution, how much tuition should be for our students. We don't even have that as a luxury to perhaps even think about. So we looked at this purely on an incremental basis. So the walk here is the tuition of $10,023 per Ag student. These are for out-of-district students, of course. The AgSTEM costs are $48,56 per student. So that is what's behind the analysis, when all the teachers, the supplies, the heating, the lighting, the incremental insurance, everything we need to stand up the Ag facility turns out at $48,56. The comment or the question was the next bucket, which is the incremental cost when they come back, if you will, to this side of the building where they need English, some basic math, and gym, and everything else that you get in normal high school experience. The reason why that's virtually zero is because when you look at the breakdown of potential other incremental costs that are in this side, this gets back to why are we here to begin with? We're here because we have a demographics problem, because we're- We're here because we have a demographics problem, because we're getting to the point where we're running into ourselves, where if we lose any more high school teachers, we're not going to be able to teach English. At the moment, I think we have one section of geometry. We can't go to zero. So what we have is a school, and this is, this was, this is an issue that's come up over the years. Last year, we had a vote on the same issue with looking at the, at the primary schools, is that you do have, we have a demographics problem which is driving our cost-per-head metric. But if you believe that the school is here and staying, then we're looking at it on an incremental basis. So we have, the picture that we chose to put up there is a classroom that is not full, and that is what we're faced with today. So we have enough teachers in the high school to be able to bring those children in without adding incremental costs. And there are questions about whether or not that's possible. Kim and her staff have looked at this, I think, no less than 12 times, and we keep coming back to the same answers. And when you look at this, all I could say, and I don't appreciate this to the level that Kim and the staff does, but I liken this to solving a differential equation. We've got multiple variables that we need to solve for at once. You've got teachers that have, that can't teach any course, they have to be certified to teach certain courses. We've got eight periods in a day in which we've got to get certain things done. And then you've got the fact that we've got capacity. So all of these things need to be balanced off when coming up with a schedule. And the result is we have excess capacity in which to bring these kids in. So the 5167 is the surplus from that tuition that we get to then redirect. And possible uses are the bond, obviously, the loan on the labs. And if we didn't have those two, which was the situation at Nanowog where they don't have a bond, 100% of that goes back into their general fund and defers the base budget. Now that, for us, is 25 years unless we get, unless we hit our max capacity sooner, which is the intention, and we bring 250 kids into this program. This is modeled at 177 or 196. It's basically the same number. So we have headroom to grow. And if we could do that, then we'll accelerate the bond, and we'll get to that place a lot sooner. So if you can go to slide 29, so I could finish, give you, John, the complete answer. Oh, that's not the right slide, sorry. 33, my mistake. So if you look at slide 33, there are, some have been looking at the cost per student, high school student, and that's a little over $24,000 a year is what costs us to educate a high school student. That's based on this fiscal year that just ended financials. So if you do the walk on this, 9524 is basically your district-wide fixed costs. So that would be Pat and the administration, and the other things at a district level that are essentially fixed, that are more binary. Either we're, either we have a district or we don't have a district. So those costs come off the top. So the costs for this building is 13,4. And, well, I should say what's left, then, the next biggest chunk, which is north of 75, I think, percent of our costs, are our teachers. The next chunk is the maintenance and operations to run this building. So that's 313 a head. Then the services that we contract for is 580. And the supplies per child is $271 a year. So that'd be textbooks and other things that would fall into that category, truly variable costs. So back to the previous slide of 32. Thank you. That's why the high school incremental costs are essentially negligible in this analysis because we have the teachers, we have the capacity to absorb these kids. Thank you.
The next comment or person that would like to speak again, if you could tell us your name and the town that you represent. Thank you.
Yes, Ellen Tracy from Washington. And I just have one question, I think probably for the superintendent or the principal. And that is, if you are going to expand the AP classes, which I think is a great idea, and you are going to give them UConn transcripts, because I'm familiar with that, is there certification that's necessary? It's my understanding they need to be certified by UConn.
AP teachers need to go to a summer course, and we send our teachers to those courses. We already have certified AP teachers, and our teachers have expressed willingness to educate themselves to do that. That's not a terribly expensive proposal. However, UConn, when we certify our teachers to become UConn professors, what they have to do is to submit the curriculum for UConn's approval, as well as their own personal transcript. We have very well-educated teachers that meet those requirements, and they know what the requirements are. So they send their transcript along with the proposed curriculum off to UConn, and UConn approves it. So these are very doable propositions for our teachers and for our school.
Okay. So UConn is not requiring, like, a doctorate degree or anything like that?
No, they do not.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I should also point out that those transcripts don't, are not just used at the university that issues them. They take them with them to wherever they go.
Could we have your name and your town, please?
Virginia Terrick-Widdell, 33 West Morris Road, Washington, Connecticut. I went to high school downtown and graduated in 1956, best athlete, that kind of thing. Now, at Cornell University, there is home economics, mechanical engineering, and dairy farming, literally a cow. Now, I think if we go equine, which is a horse, Peter Tuck Farm has many of them, no comment. I know that there are only nine of you on the school board, and that's a big decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Karen, could you come up and just, could you give us one moment, please, for your next question? Talk about the equine program real quick at Pat's request.
Karen Files is on staff at Shapog. She is our publicity, communications, technology person. And she also is involved with Nanowog, runs a horse farm, and really can give us the importance of the equine center because that has come up a couple of times at different meetings. So Karen might as well share her expertise.
Hi, good evening. In addition to being an educator for many years, I've also owned a horse farm in Southbury. In that time I've been, I have employed students from Nanowog as part of their SAE program, but I also have students who ride at my facility that attend, for example, Trumbull School, where there is another ag science program. And I think the thing that's important to understand about the equine program is that as educators, the biggest thing we need to do is engage students. Students come into this program because they're engaged in the activity of horses. We are in the middle of a state that is loaded with children that love horses. So you get them into the program, and then what happens is that you are able to then teach them content through a relevant, engaging topic. So I'll give you an example. The students that have graduated from Nanowog and from Trumbull, none of them who worked at my farm have gone into horse or equine production. They are all in school for science. One of them is studying genetics. I have a student that rides with me that graduated this fall, who is now at the University of Alabama studying microbiology. She wants to be an oncologist. She graduated top of her class, and when I asked her, because I was putting together the video when she was riding at my farm this summer, what it was that made her want to get involved in ag science to begin with, because she became, or she's going to become an oncologist, and how did that equate? When she was in middle school, she knew that Trumbull had a horse program. She was really interested. When she got into the equine program, she immediately took classes her freshman and sophomore year that exposed her to genetics, microbiology, physiology, anatomy. She was hooked. From there, she went on to take every AP science class you can imagine. It's the engagement factor of the horses that is so important. In addition, many of the students are involved in the business side of equine. I took students, my SAE students, I took them yesterday to an auction to look at horses. They had to not only understand the conformation and physiology and genetics, they had to understand cost value. They had to understand how do they recoup the money that they would purchase any animal with, how to run liability insurance. My kids know about workers' compensation insurance. Many high school students don't. That information comes through your SAE. Equine is one of the number-one draws. I can tell you that I have middle school students right now at my barn, riding in Southbury, that are at private schools, that would come here and pay tuition if the school opened. They've told me. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am? It's working, I think. Nope. And again, while we're fixing our audio, all comments, all statements are welcome. We'll be here until, until you're done answering questions and making comments. Is it fixed?
I think so.
There you go.
Okay. I don't have a question. I am Barbara Henry. I'm the first selectman in the town of Roxbury, and I'm here tonight to support this. I have seen the presentation probably five times, and it has just gotten better. You did a great job tonight, I have to tell you that. And I, while I have the mic, I do want to thank the superintendent and the principal for going on all the road shows because I think it's really made a difference, and you've given people the opportunity to ask questions. I am also here with Gary Lord. He is the chairman of the Board of Finance. I am here speaking on behalf of the full Board of Selectmen in Roxbury. I know Jim Conway is here, and he may want to speak for himself. Gary is our Board of Finance chairman. He is not going to say he's speaking for the entire Board of Finance because he has not formally had the opportunity to poll all of them, but the ones that he have also support this endeavor. Both Gary and I have served over the years on the long-range planning, and for the, first of all, for the elementary schools, and then for the middle high school, spanning 12 and 18 months, respectively. And we recognize, we served on these because we recognize that Region 12 was headed for problems. But we've been spinning our wheels for far too long, and now it is time to act. The state supports this program. They support it with funding, which is huge. And I think it's the only viable option that has come along to keep this region K to 12, which is what the people voted when they wanted to keep the elementary schools. They also wanted to keep the high school. That's the message that I got, and I don't see anything else that comes close to this. In the long-range plan, we covered having a charter school, a magnet school, building a K-12 up here, which would only have been funded maximum 30%, and we have to remember that this is at 80%. We also looked at doing nothing, which, over time, it is not sustainable for any of us. That is the most expensive option in front of us. And then there is break up the region, which I have not heard from the people in Roxbury that that is something that they would like to see. So the opportunities that have been presented tonight that will provide our students is beyond what we imagined. And so I think it's a boost in the arm, not only to have the agri-science, but the STEM side of this for Shapog. It's going to be Shapog. And the exposure on all levels, middle school through high school, is just great. So I just wanted to thank you all for your time and effort. I did sit in one of your seats at one time. I do not envy you. Thank you very much. And the only other thing is that I hope people get out and vote, regardless how you feel. You do, you have to make the effort to get out and vote on November 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Lord, Roxbury Board of Finance. And as Barbara said, I am not speaking on behalf of my board because we haven't had a meeting to thoroughly discuss this. But I can tell you, I'm pretty sure that it will be unanimous agreement in supporting this project. I want to thank the board and Dr. Constantino and her employees for the great effort, the great thought that they've put into this. I think they've come up with a fantastic program. And as Barbara has mentioned, previous projects we've looked at were a maximum 30-something percent reimbursement. This is 80%. Might even be more when we get all done. I'm not assured of that, but there's a chance. But even so, 80% reimbursement, we're going to have a whole new campus here. This is, this is just a great opportunity for not only the town of Roxbury, but for our entire region. I would also like to say, I've attended numerous meetings and discussed every, all the facets of this, and I, and I want to assure you that, in my opinion, they have come up with very conservative estimates of revenue by not estimating what the total number of students they may bring in, but by picking the minimum number that they expect to come in. And, and as far as expenses go, they have estimated expenses on the high side. So both ways, it's a conservative estimate, and it still comes out to be a benefit, a positive cash flow to the region, not only during the 25 years, but also and especially after the 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Al Wolf. I'm from Bridgewater.
Could you get up closer to the microphone, please?
Thank you. Sorry. There you go. My name's Al Wolf. I'm from Bridgewater, and I just had a few comments on this thing. I think overall, it's a good idea, but I think the budgets on this thing are way out of whack. Canterbury built the school recently. They paid $183 a square foot for their construction. Trump Towers, the fourth tallest building in America, only cost them $240 a square foot. We want to put a science addition on the school, and we've got to pay $542 a square foot from the numbers I saw on the Internet. And, and to me, the worst thing is the equine center is going to cost us $486 a square foot. You could put up a building like that for fractions of that amount of money. And I really would like to know why this is so far out of the realm of normal construction costs for doing, even the garage, they have $359 a square foot for the garage. It doesn't make any sense to me, and I'd really like an explanation. I know I'm a taxpayer for the town of Bridgewater, the town of Danbury, and the state of Connecticut, and my taxes go up by every dollar that we manage to spend on certain things. And you may not be spending the tax dollar here in Connecticut, in Bridgewater or Washington, but your taxes are going to go up with the state of Connecticut because somebody was paying for this bill one way or another. If we shut the costs down and bring them back more to a reasonable level, then, of course, our taxes are going to rise by that more reasonable level. It's time to be fiscally responsible for everybody here.
Thank you, sir. And I am confident that we have the right person to answer, we'll call it answer, some of your questions. So if we could have Charlie Booz from Castle Booz, the architectural firm who has worked very hard and very closely on this project, I think, and, sir, will answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. The numbers quoted, probably project cost numbers would include all of the soft costs and especially the site costs. If you look at the individual buildings on a construction cost basis, they're nowhere near those numbers that were quoted. But we are dealing with wage rates that we have to pay because we have public financing that costs money. I might add that the project was carefully and thoroughly estimated by ONG Industries, who have done many, many, many projects throughout the state of Connecticut. We, we had some serious meetings with them, and that resulted in some economies. But the numbers that are quoted reflect the industry standards as they presently exist.
Thank you very much. And someone wanted to follow up, too. It was mentioned that the, as a taxpayer, they pay for this regardless because it's a Connecticut tax. But maybe Val from the board, you could come up. Is it a fact that these dollars are set aside for these type of facilities by the State Department of Education, so either you use it or somebody else will?
I think that's an important point. We all pay our state taxes, our local property taxes, and-
We get precious, precious little state money into supporting Region 12. And if you go down 84 to either Danbury or Waterbury, you'll see some incredible state-of-the-art facilities, schools, built beautifully. And here we are, our elementary schools average about $1,950. This facility is very old. It's about time we get some of our tax money back here. And 80 percent of that is what I want to see. Yes, we pay taxes, but let's bring it home. And that's why this particular project is so appealing, because we're going to see some of that money returned to us. So I think that we're in a good place here with the way the financial documents have been engineered, because they have been, the oversight on the financials have been amazing.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. Did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that these numbers that we have are estimates. They have not been bid. These will be bid. The second thing I'd like to add is, the first questioner asked about the, whether we had money in there for cost overruns and whatnot. There actually is a number of $4.8 million that's included in there for escalation and other types of cost overruns. So it's a substantial number, about 12 percent of the project total. Actually, it's a little more than that of the project total that's in for those. So these things have been estimated in there. In order to get a number that we think, we have some reasonable confidence is going to be the cost, so we're not left with that. You know, you've seen those pictures of the bridge that makes it halfway across the river, where we're trying to make sure that we've taken enough into consideration to get this project finished.
Thank you, Greg. Sir, your question or comment?
My name is Joel Einhorn, Roxbury, and I'd like to thank everybody, the volunteers at this table, because I know it's a difficult job. I had four questions. They're brief. The first is, how many eighth graders in our region were turned down at Nanawog for the coming year? The second was, how much does the...
Do you mind if we just take one at a time?
Sure.
So the first question is, how many students were turned down from Nanawog this particular year? Who would like to take that question? Anthony, please?
In a particular year?
Can you just hold the microphone closer?
Last year.
Last year, one year, how many students were turned away from the Nanawog program?
Approximately 54 last year.
Applied and didn't get in?
Yes.
54 students applied and were not?
54 applied and did not...
From Region 12?
Oh, from our...
Yeah, that's what we're concerned about here. In the eighth grade at Region 12, how many were turned down?
We have nine students from Shapagh that are currently attending.
Did any get turned down?
Give me a moment, and I'll give you the answer.
Okay, next question, please.
All right. The next question is, how much does our budget go up for maintaining all these buildings and the animals that live in them and have to be fed and heated?
Well, the costs of that are built into the cost. All of the electricity, the heating, the animals feed, all of that was built into the budget for this, which is the approximately $900,000 a year, which gets offset by the tuition that these people pay. So that's all been built in, and an inflation factor has been built into that for purposes of this business plan.
And how, what kind of process have you gone through to determine what the demand for this school is from other districts? You come up with this number of about 200...
Okay, the superintendent would like to address that question. The question is, what due diligence have you done to assess the demand for this type of program?
As someone who has worked for 11 years in Fairfield County, I can tell you that Nanawog has such a wonderful reputation that they never had to do any aggressive recruitment out in the schools. They just basically would go to the counselor and say, "Listen, I'm going to be here Tuesday morning. I'd like to have a meeting with the students who are interested in agri-science." What we will be doing is having aggressive recruitment, which means that we will have every eighth grader in the auditorium in each of our catchment area schools, pump them up about this program. They're going to get so excited, it's going to be a brand-new building, a brand-new facility, and get the students in. We know that we have a lot of students who are interested. We know that we are closer in proximity than Nanawog was, and I can personally tell you that many students never applied, because they knew that they turn away. 50 or 60 qualified applicants every year. So we have only said we're going to get 49 students each year, but we know we can get many, many more than that. There's also in Danbury, a new STEM Academy. It's a middle school academy, and those students do not have a feeder school to go to in Danbury. Danbury was offered this program, but they're landlocked, so they could not build a facility. So those students, who are really, really high-caliber students, who are engaged in STEM, are going to be really very excited to come to our program. So we're not really concerned about students coming here.
Well, excuse me, you want to answer? Go ahead. Did you want to add?
Yeah, I was going to explain the chart. You asked a question, your first question was, the answer's two.
Were turned down?
Yeah. Two that were wait-listed, is how they're referred to. But yes, two from Shapagh were turned down. And did you want to follow up on that one? Go ahead.
I do. I think it's very important to note that this year, with the excitement of this program, when Mr. Davenport came to Shapagh in the typical way that he does, we ran out of applications. 25 of our students took the applications. 25 of them won't be getting into Nanawog. And the excitement from this new program generated much greater interest than we've had in the past. Not every student is willing to leave their home school to go somewhere else. So it's not apples to apples when you say, "How many got turned down last year?" And when you compare it with this year, with the excitement of this new program, it's a whole different ballgame. Thank you.
The way we looked at the, let me take you through the chart and see if you have a follow-up question. If you look at the graph or the pie on the left-hand side, that represents, so remember, earlier I put up a slide with the sending towns, the six sending towns. So, and of course, you had Region 12, and we're up to nine. So if you look at the total size of that pie, there are a little short of 8,000 high school students in our sending towns, including Region 12. In the sending towns, there's 7,693, that's the large blue area. The small green triangle is Shapagh, sitting at 261. And that red triangle that's pulled out, or slice of that pie, is if you look at all of the students in those sending towns that have applied to Nanawog, they total 116. So we have 116 students that are currently enrolled at Nanawog from these sending towns. So our demand starts there, historically, and that's based on a three-year average, looking back. Now, what we need to get to, and what the numbers that I presented earlier represent, is getting to 196 out-of-district students. So again, we still have a very large pool of students to go pull from. And as Pat said, there are some fundamentals that are in our favor in how we can get that pie large enough to, or attract our students. Is, one, we have the shiniest new object in the state. We're the 20th, the newest agri-science program, the emphasis on the equine, and some of the other state-of-the-art facilities that we'll have. Two, we're closer. New Fairfield numbers are typically down. It's a long ride from New Fairfield and some of the other towns that are closer to the border of the state than Nanawog is. And as Pat said, Bill has really not been aggressively marketing into those towns, because, back to where he started, when you're turning away 50 to 60 kids a year, it's not very satisfying to go whip up demand, to get more applications, knowing that you're going to have to turn down another 50 or 60 kids, or whatever the number would be. So there's a little compassion built into these numbers. So when you look at where we need to get to, and the fact we've got six sending towns, that number three is simply, we need three more children per year from each of the sending towns to get to our number. And when you think about it at that level, that is not a far stretch. I think it's a very doable goal. Is there a question, sir?
Yeah, I guess I find it troublesome that you're willing to bet $11 million on having sufficient income from a source that you really haven't quantified. Seriously, I would think you could send out questionnaires to eighth graders in these towns and see how many are really interested, because otherwise, you're going to fall short of your revenue expectations, and the taxpayers of these towns are going to have to pay off that bond. Thank you.
I do just want to give a little editorial about that. We're in a position where it's do this and bring in students who come with revenue, or do nothing. The do-nothing scenario is much more risky. It's much more dire, and it is, for sure, going to cause some major problems in the region, the school system, and in the economy of the towns if we do nothing. So I am willing, with the board, to take that chance, because this is going to be a fabulous program, that's going to be a wonderful investment for your children, for your grandchildren, keeping this area alive. So I just want you to realize, there are really only two choices. It's bringing this wonderful program with students who come with tuition, that is funded 80 percent by the state, or do nothing. And in 2021, the population of Shapagh will be 191 students if you do nothing. And this building will still be here, and all the overhead costs will still be here, and you'll still be responsible to educate them. And that does not include adding the cost for science labs that you will be responsible to also do and repair here at the building. So I understand the passion, and I understand people have concerns, but understand also the situation if we do nothing.
All right. This is a good chance. My name is Ed Weinright. I'm from Bridgewater. I'm going to read a letter that's going to be in the Spectrum this week. I'm going to skip the introduction, because I'm constrained. Last year, the proposed catchment district sent 47 students, grades nine through 12, to Nanawog for Woodbury for the agri-science. The director of agri-science in Woodbury has provided a six-year history of the student applications. The history shows the proposed districts will average 31 students apply each year. That's in the eighth grade. 31 students apply each year. And you heard previously that we need 49. Assuming all the applicants, 100 percent of them are accepted at Shapagh, there would be 124 students, nine through 12, in the school year 2020-21. That's the first full year of production of the agri-science program. However, the region has proposed 226 students in the first full year of operation. The region's assumption indicates 102 more students than history predicts. This is over an 80 percent increase in the application, a very aggressive objective. And the region does not provide a rationale for this aggressive increase. In the event of a shortfall, this will mean $10,000 of missing revenue per each out-of-region student that does not meet the requirement. You know, everybody, if they don't show up, it's going to cause a shortfall in the revenue, $10,000 per student. In August 4th of 2015, Dr. Dana Wenzel, Commissioner of Education, wrote in support of this application, enrollment, quote, "Enrollment in Connecticut existing agricultural STEM centers has increased by 18 percent over 10 years." With 124 agri-science Shapagh students in 2020-21, the first full year, and a modest growth of 2 percent, the region estimate, out of, the estimate for the, that is required by the region, will take 24 more years to achieve.
Sir, could you wrap it up, please?
That's the end of it.
Oh, perfect timing. Thank you.
Yeah, I've been cut off before.
No, I didn't cut you off, sir. As we mentioned, in respect of the other folks waiting to comment, you had more than three minutes. Thank you. Excuse me, please, can we keep it to the com, if you'd like to make a comment, please, come up to the podium. Thank you very much. Next, please, ma'am. Please, thank you. Up next, sir.
Good evening. My name is Peter Mariano, town of Roxbury. Two small children, one in the school program, one will be in the program soon. I'm on the Planning Commission in Roxbury. I don't speak for the whole board. I personally am in favor of this. Sorry. I have a question. Is there, with energy and climate change in the minds of everyone and our future generations, is there anything in the building that has or brings into the curriculum and the building itself, any sort of renewable resources or renewable energy generation that could then be implemented as part of the science/technology program?
If we could have Mr. Booz again, please respond to the question.
I can't speak for the program itself, but...
Could you get closer to the microphone, please?
I can't speak for the program itself. That's being planned for the building, but the physical nature of the building, it will be constructed as a Leeds Silver Building, as, which is basically a requirement of the state now. And we will plan and explore certainly renewable energy for the building, and things like, you know, green roofs and the like. I think the whole green and environmental movement is, will become an important part of the program, the teaching program as such. So we will do whatever we can to incorporate certainly renewable energy into the building.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jessica Granger. I'm probably the only person from out of town tonight. I'm from Danbury, and I enrolled our daughter in Booth Free School this year. And we decided to enroll in Booth Free, because we started hearing about agri-STEM. And I'm driving her back and forth twice a day to Booth Free, and I'm paying tuition, because I was very excited about this program. I'm also a Nanawog graduate. I went back and forth from Danbury. I remember Bill Davenport. I think this is a fantastic program, and my family is looking forward to actually moving into Region 12 because of all this, and we really hope it passes.
Thank you very much. My name is Ken Schultz. I am a Washington resident. I am also the Washington Primary School PTO president, but more importantly, I am the father of a seven-year-old daughter and a seven-month-old son, who will be directly affected by this... I was very excited about this program. I'm also a Nanowog graduate. Went back and forth from Danbury. I remember Bill Davenport. I think this is a fantastic program, and my family is looking forward to actually moving into Region 12 because of all this, and we really hope that passes.
Thank you very much. My name is Ken Schultz. I am a Washington resident. I am also the Washington Primary School PTO president. But more importantly, I am the father of a seven-year-old daughter and a seven-month-old son, who will be directly affected by this program. And I have to tell you, I think I can speak comfortably for the parents in Washington Primary School. There is great enthusiasm about this program. The kids that go to the primary school are the future of this region. And I know, as a parent, I'm excited to know when my daughter and son go into Chapag, they will have different avenues, different opportunity, and more importantly, choices that they can pick, whatever work path they choose. I'm very impressed by Chapag. I think that what excites me is, it's very easy to sit on your laurels, look at the test scores, and say how exceptional we are, and pound our chest, but we're not good enough about that. We need to look towards the future. What is going to help our children be able to compete in a 21st century job market? And this is it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken that would like to ask a question or make a comment?
Michael Gora.
You're going to have to get up closer to the microphone. Thank you.
Michael Gora, Washington resident. Just a few comments, no questions. Because of the low numbers of the students in this school, last year, my daughter, who had to choose between taking band and taking French III. And it was something that was very hard, difficult for her, but because of the schedule, those were offered only at the exact same time. And she had to take an entire year off from playing the bass clarinet, which is something that she absolutely loves. This program will bring students in here to make that scenario much less common, maybe even go away. So that's one comment. I'm also very excited that, about the opportunities that this program will offer our children, and believe that this program will not only save the region as a whole, but has the potential to make Chapag the premier high school in the state. The fact that with conservative numbers regarding the number of qualified applicants, this program will nearly pay for itself, is, in my mind, what makes this a no-brainer. This region has repeatedly stated that they will approve a higher budget to maintain what they believe is a better education, whether it be in a high school or in the elementary schools specifically in the last few years. There is no doubt that this program will provide a much more vibrant, diverse, enriching, and comprehensive educational experience for our children. I would be willing to vote yes for a higher budget for this program. And this proposal actually predicts an overall cash flow neutral. I trust those that put this proposal together, that they are not inflating the numbers or inflating the proposed applicants. They have nothing to gain by that. The state will not invest $29 million into something that they feel will fail. My only regret is that this program will not start until my youngest is a senior. I wish that both my daughters had an opportunity to participate in this. Being a veterinarian in town, AgSTEM is extremely important. I am consistently looking for qualified technicians. I'm going to be on the advisory council. There is a need for students with this kind of experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get that up a little bit. Can you hear me? I'm Curtis Reed, the First Selectman in Bridgewater. And I'd like to thank the board and experts at the table here for all the time and analysis that you've gone through. We get a lot of questions, you know, Bridgewater's a tough place when it comes to schools. And I'd like to ask you what's at stake in this vote. And before we answer that, I think, you know, hopefully, a lot of people have attended the many meetings, looked at the mailings, have had meetings. We're going to have other meetings in town with different groups to discuss this during the quiet time. And I listen to concerns of people, and there are a lot of concerns out there. And you have to weigh these things, and you have to know where to come down and present the options. And I think the, you know, the premises, some of them are a little bit risky. I think the number of students. We're going to build it, and maybe they will come. And that's something where we have to take a little leap of faith. The ongoing costs, we don't really know what those are, and how that will go with inflation and bonding and things like that. We have the number of students dropping. That's also a concern. And people have asked, and I've asked this question, why horses? Why not sheep? I like sheep. But anyway, I think, you know, another one is, what are we going to do with the buildings if it fails? What's that going to cost us? And I've heard all these things. And the taxes are going to go up. And retirees are particularly concerned about their taxes, their property taxes, and a lot of people just vote on that. But I think, you know, my concern is that, I think you have to look at the other side, too. Is it a good way to learn, to have AgriScience? And my feeling is, yes. I did it. It made a lot of difference in my life as to have focus. Your scientific concepts in an applied way is very valuable in education, especially at this age where a lot of things with kids are unreal. It's not going to be a push-button age when you go out to the barn. And I think that's a good thing for kids. So what if we don't do this? Well, we're going to lose dollars. We've seen that. The opportunity of state financing. I hope that it'll strengthen our region, and will draw families, and that we'll be able to keep the great schools open. And I think we've taken a vote on that, and the towns felt that that was important. And I hope that continues. And I think we need to improve the education and the advanced placement, and draw people who are now going to private schools, and sell Chapag as an opportunity to save money to go to college and get a good education while you do it. And I think it will attract families. And I think it will help sell homes. There are a lot of homes on the market right now. If there are no young families coming in and buying them, what's going to happen to our homes? What's going to happen to real estate values? I think it'll keep the towns vibrant, and we've heard people say that. But one thing I've spent today doing is analyzing the tax consequences for the towns. And I looked at, in particular, the 10 worst years, when the increase was going to be $1 million roughly a year from the bonding of AgriScience and funding the science labs. And surprisingly, in those worst years, like the infamous 2021 or 2020 budget year, the taxes went up, and I have the numbers for anybody who wants them, but the taxes go up about 5% in the three towns on your school budget portion, which is roughly somewhere between 60% in Roxbury, 69% in Washington, 63% in Bridgewater, with a 63% average of what we pay as our total tax bill goes to Region 12. So how much is that going to go up? How much are your taxes going to go up in those bad years, those 10 years, when we have the biggest part of the debt load? They're going to go up roughly 3.5%, some less, some more, which equates to not a lot of money. And it's something I think we can afford. And I think the benefits to this are much greater than the risks. And I think as we look at it harder, I think you need to keep that in mind. It's not about voting your pocketbook, it's about the strength of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Anne Martin. I'm a Washington resident. I have a question about the selection process of the students. You said that there would be 196 students accepted into the program, coming from six or maybe seven other towns, and that they would be chosen based on, I think, academics and behavior and recommendations. Are any of those slots going to be specifically reserved for Region 12 students, or not? Or is it a completely egalitarian selection process?
Region 12 students who wish to participate in the program and continue to meet the standards of the program will be accepted into the program. There's no formula, there's no quota. We encourage our kids to take part in this program.
So they will be competing, assuming that, well, maybe it's a broad assumption that there could be more than 200 kids applying to the program. You said that 50-something were accepted or applied from Region 12. Two, no, nine people were applied and went from Region 12, two were turned down.
Currently, there are nine students who are at Nanowog. Let me just give you a little quick background. Eighth graders throughout the state of Connecticut have the opportunity to go to vocational schools and AgriScience schools. And the sending towns have to pay the tuition. It's part of the state charter. So if you have 20 students who applied at Nanowog and 18 get in, you have to pay for them and you have to provide transportation. We, when we did our model, we started with 196 students.
In more, bring in more money.
That's a possibility, you know, but we have right now, we have 226, we have anywhere between 24 and 34 students that we can still take in. Anthony, would you like to add something?
Yeah, that's a great point. We looked at Nanowog's historical attendance from their own students, and it's about 21% of their students attend their program. The balance comes from out of district. So when we looked at our, we used that same 20% against our declining population, but we took 20% in. So we thought we'd probably see the same interest and experience that Nanowog has had. But as Pat said, we have capacity for 250, so we're right now assuming 226 total. That would leave us with 25, 30 more. And if we get those all from our Chapag kids, now we're looking at nearly half of our students majoring in AgriScience. And as much as I'm encouraged by this program, I'm not quite sure we would have that much natural interest. I would be pleasantly surprised and happy, but we have headroom to absorb that.
Thank you for your questions. Do you have another question?
Just a comment.
Okay.
Well, hopefully, this new program will be able to increase those math scores a little more, because I beg to differ, but I don't think that 52% mastery level in math is really acceptable. Although I do applaud your 86% in English.
We are in agreement. Let me just talk about the math scores for a second, being that you brought them up. The Common Core standards, which we fully embrace here in the region, has totally realigned the mathematics curriculum. And basically what it has done, it has pushed down a lot of the topics to go lower. What does that mean? We're teaching a lot of the ninth grade topics in eighth grade, and the eighth grade topics in seventh grade. So we also don't think that 52% is a great score, and we're not happy with that. But the reason we shared it with you is because we wanted to show you how we did on the new assessments. But I also wanted you to see that we were...
21st, I think?
21st in the state. This is a state problem because of the new assessment. So we're working on it. Everything is a work in progress. But I think when you relate the scores to the state, we're at least ahead of the game. And, you know, we have continuous work to do. But that's why we gave you those scores. We wanted you to see how we did on the new assessments.
Go ahead. Debbie Faris from Washington.
Okay, that mic's not working again.
No, eBay.
I don't think so. Hang on one second. There we go.
Okay.
No.
No. Even closer? I'm...
Yeah, you just need to get closer and speak up, please.
I've never been accused of being, like, soft-spoken, so that's pretty funny. First, I want to thank all the volunteers on the board. I know this has been a long, long journey for you all. And hopefully, if I exceed the three minutes, you'll allow me the 518 that you gave, the Selectman of Bridgewater. So what I, I love everything I've heard, you know, I'm not, I have no judgment as of yet. I'm not concerned about the money. It's over a long period of time. I think we can handle it financially. My biggest concern is the children. I'm glad Anne brought up some of the questions that I was going to bring up to make this go a little bit faster. My concern is our kids coming up, is the middle school programs, is to start really teaching our kids what they want to strive for, so that they can get into this program, because I'm a little concerned that it's going to attract all these kids from out of town into here. And yes, it's going to pay for everything else, and that's wonderful. But I want our kids to get the education, because I've had relatives go through this program, and I got to tell you, they can hardly read and write when they got out of Chapag. No offense, I graduated from here, I have three generations from Washington High, but they would have some more that just you guys kind of push through. So I'm really concerned about our kids being educated, whether it's the core program, whether it's a STEM program, any program, I want them educated. And then the big thing is, November 15th is your do-or-die. So you've got one shot to pass this, is that correct?
Yes.
So I guess I'm a little, maybe I just don't know all the information. Is there any way you could have gotten an earlier vote in, so you could have fixed this, and so you wouldn't be down to, you know, everything riding on November 10th?
She wants to know if, push it up earlier, or...
Can you pull this off by November 15th?
The way the state works, just so you know, is that in the past, everything had to be in by June 30th to get into this cycle, because basically, it's a yearly cycle with the legislature. We got an extension from June 30th to November 15th, because we knew that we would never be able to get a referendum in the towns before June 30th. And in order to give the, it's called the ED49, it's the application to move forward with the plans, et cetera, et cetera. But the final piece is the piece that says the communities are going to support their fair share of this project, $11.7 million. So we knew that we would never be able to do that by June 30th. The legislature, with a lot of help from Art O'Neill, was able to give us an extension. They changed the law and give us an extension to November 15th. The State Board of Education met in a special session in the summer. They came in, Kim and I were there, I believe it was August 4th, just to make this work for us. So, you know, we have support from all over the state, we have support from the legislature, the board supports it, we support it as administrative team. It is what it is. November 15th is the date. Now, some people have asked, why not Election Day? I might as well just throw that in here while I'm up here. If it was Election Day, we would have needed a 60-day window before Election Day to get everything ready for the referendum. And again, we didn't have the time. So because it's on November 10th, and it's not with the municipal election, we're able to have a 30-day window. So today's the public hearing. We're in, you know, everything is very legal when you get to this point of the game. So, you know, after this public hearing, we'll have a Board of Education meeting, and we will send this to referendum. And you have to do that within 30 days, and that's why we're kind of stuck. But for those of you who know, the state, you know, the state is in financial strains. They do have some concerns. If we don't tell them by November 15th, we're going to pay our fair share, that money's going to disappear, because it's going to go to somebody else. So that's why it really is. It's our only bet. It's our only bet in the game, as someone has said to me. It's November 10th, or bust. So. It's November 10th or bust, so.
I'd like to add something to that, and I think it's, you sort of have to work back from the Election Day, because first of all, we had to develop quite a number of plans. We didn't get the answers from the legislature until the very end, actually passed the end of their session. And then from that point, we had to plan this, we had to go over the financials, we had to figure out the financials, we had to vet the financials. We had to look at the plans, we changed the physical plans that I outlined for you several times in order to meet needs. We had to visit other agri-science centers, we had to sit down and work with the people at other centers, especially Mr. Davenport, who was invaluable, in helping us understand the kinds of costs we would have, so we would have a high level of confidence. And then we had to set forth a period when we could, we could present this to the towns and the people in it, and that we could tell you why we think this is a good idea. And of course, when we tell you why this is a good idea, we're advocating for it. We can't advocate once we send it to a public hearing, we can't spend money to advocate once we send it to a public hearing. So all of those things take periods of time, and that's the reason why we were under a very compressed schedule. Because it all started with the legislative approvals and the State Board of Education approval, and that didn't come till the summer. Frankly, the fact that we're here looking at a November referendum, when you consider the amount of information that had to be processed, is nothing short of a Herculean effort by a lot of people in the school organization. But no, I wish we had three or four shots at it. But we're going to have one, and I think it's important that people support this, because this is an opportunity to get control of our future and to keep a really good high school in this region. Because when people decide what town they want to live in, if they are a person with children, they look primarily at the high schools. And when they look at the high schools, they need to see one. And if there isn't one in these towns, there's going to be a concern, and those people may pass us by. And when you take that chunk of people out of the homebuyer market, and you're trying to sell your home, you're not going to be happy that you've taken some percentage of them out of the market by not having a good high school. So that's what we're really trying to do. We're trying to build on the success this school has had over the years. And I admit, yeah, there are always people that are going to be unhappy with the education or unhappy with, with how they performed, or others that they know performed. But we also have a lot of kids, we're trying to afford opportunities. We can't guarantee you're going to come out of here and end up at MIT like some of the other students have. But we can guarantee that we're going to give you the opportunity to do it. And I think that's the idea, and that's what this is all about.
Thank you.
So, I'll have a two-pronged question, almost to answer my first question about the middle school feeder program. Is your staff, there must be some hiring of new staff, are you telling me that all of your staff that you have right now can handle being taught and educated to take on all of these new programs, which would be great, but then goes back to making a feeder program in the middle school right now? Is that opportunity, you're going to have that opportunity, you know, starting next fall, to feed these kids into, so they can have a good shot at this STEM program?
As we speak, anticipating the success of this referendum, we are planning curriculum for our middle school students that would start in the next school year or so, so that they would be exposed to these agri-science concepts, and they would be ready for the opening of the school. So yes, that is a plan.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sidney Warble. I'm from Bridgewater and Roxbury and Washington. I've lived in the mall, and I've probably been the most recent graduate of Chappagh looking around this room in a very long time. I had graduated in 2004 and went on to Wentworth Institute of Technology, not quite MIT, but still graduated with an engineering degree, and a STEM program would have helped me tremendously. I'm actually really jealous of the upcoming students that are going to have the opportunities that I didn't have. But looking at it, my children are going to be directly impacted by this. And I look around at the other kids, and they're all playing on their iPhones and playing on their iPads. They're constantly in front of computers. These kids need to get dirty. They need to play in the mud, they need to learn animals and experience things that you can't get from holding a piece of technology. And I think that the STEM program is really going to strongly affect all of our children and most of your grandchildren. The only thing that I question is, people that are my age, in their twenties, thirties, how are the towns helping to attract these young families? Because I'm looking at the housing market, and even as an engineer, I can't afford to live here, as much as I would love to. My peers, my friends, we all love this area, but we can't afford to come home. How are you helping us?
I do want to let you know that all three towns have that as a priority and a core concern that they're working on. They're trying to attract families, they're looking at some more affordable housing. I meet with the selectmen probably once every two months, and we try to put our heads together to work together. What I'll tell you, which I said recently, is our job is to educate the kids, and that's our charter from the state, to make sure we have the best schools that we can have. And so that's why we're here tonight. But I truly believe that this new program and that school on that hill will attract families, and hopefully, more people will have the opportunity to move in as we all work together. It definitely is a priority, and we've heard that a lot, and so have the selectmen and the Board of Finance and the Economic Development Teams. And I can tell you that they really are working on that. And you're probably a good person to maybe get involved. I don't, which town are you living in now?
Currently, Roxbury.
Roxbury, okay. So I would definitely hook up with Barbara Henry and just say, listen, I want to get involved, I mean, how can I help? So maybe you can be a conduit to those people who do want to move in and help develop a plan, because I know they want to bring in young families.
All right. I am absolutely 110% for this, and I expect everyone here to be also. Thank you.
So, are there anyone else? Oh, here we go.
Hi, I'm Paula Conway from Roxbury. I have three kids, fifth grade, first grade, and a two-year-old. So this program will directly impact my children. I was PTO president at Booth for the past three years, and I can tell you, pretty much at every PTO meeting, every soccer game, every baseball game, it's been, what's going to happen to our kids? We don't have a high school, we're not going to have a high school, the way our numbers are. How are we going to have a baseball team? How are we going to have a play? And I can tell you for the first time in a long time, that the parents in these schools actually have hope. And something to shoot for, something to hope for, for their kids, and it's wonderful. And I can't think of a program that is a better fit for our communities than this program. So I thank you, the board, for all of your hard work, and I can't wait to vote yes. Thank you.
I'm Holly Flora, I live in Roxbury. Craig, did I hear you say that the new science labs would cost between four and five million dollars?
That's, that's correct. That's what they would cost if we were financing them ourselves.
I see, could, is, what is the disparity on the sheets that you passed out that said it was going to cost 1.5?
Well, some of the science lab costs are figured into the STEM piece rather than separated out as the science labs, because we believe that about 50% of it can be placed in that thing, that bundle. The other thing is, when you do a standalone project, there are a lot of other costs that are figured into the cost for the project. Mobilization costs, the cost for various pieces of the architects, project managers, those kind of things, that if you do a standalone project, you've got to include those, and that bumps the cost up a little bit as well. So the bottom line is, if we, if we just came back for that, we would be coming in at probably somewhere around 4.4 to 5 million dollars. That's sort of where it would be for that. So we're able to take advantage of the 80% reimbursement for half of it, of substantial, 80% reimbursement on all those mobilization and other costs, which otherwise, we would get maybe 20%. So that's why the big difference and discrepancy. What we're basically getting is about $7 million of capital improvements, plus the program. But 7 million of capital improvements outside of the, of the, of the direct buildings that are being built for the STEM program. So it's a substantial benefit to the district to be able to do this and to make these improvements to our high school with 80% state reimbursement for a good chunk of it.
Thank you. Second question is, the equine program and all of the space and capital that's being invested in that seems to me personally to be a little bit of fluff compared to the other components of the program. Can it be broken up? Is there-
Charlie Boots, could you please address that question?
Well, I think it's an academic question, not a architectural question.
Okay.
Perhaps she didn't hear.
The equine program is an important part of planning, due to the rich history of equine in this area, and the demand and the need and the interest, the interest on the part of students that, that we have interviewed and that Mr. Davenport has worked with over the years. Also, it gives our students research and development and business opportunities that are not seen in other high schools. Students running a competition, students making plans for the use of that facility, running it, doing the research, and then actually implementing it. These are huge academic opportunities that would happen because of the equine center.
Do students specify which, they're going to be in the equine program, or they're going to be in the small animal program, and et cetera?
All students come into an exploratory program, although many students come in with a demonstrated interest, as we talked about in the application process. But all students come into the program and take part in an exploratory process, and as they go through high school and they're sophomore and junior years, begin to declare a major, as it were, in the agri-science program. Dairy production, equine, aquaculture, so on and so forth.
And about how many students do you anticipate being in that equine program?
That's hard to say, but, that's hard to say. I really don't want to make a promise that I can't keep.
Well, can you give us an estimate? I mean, it seems like a large capital investment for an unspecified quantity.
Mm-hmm. You know, Nanawog has a number of students that are interested in equine and actually focus on that area. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I would be happy to get it for you.
Thank you.
Those are the students that already exist.
Thank you. And the last question is for Pat. We spoke about the period of time that we would be locked into this program no matter what, and you were going to ask council about that.
And I forgot to do that. So maybe, Gary, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know the answer to that question?
No, I've placed-
Maybe, Bonds Council, Mike?
In terms of me, I've placed a number of calls to council at the State Department of Education to follow up with that, the latest one this afternoon, but I have not yet heard back.
But we are going to be locked in for at least as long as the bonding period, is that correct?
I would think so. I believe, Bob, do you want to, I believe that if you accept 80% of the costs from the state to pay for this program, you have to run the program. So I think you're making a commitment to do that. As you've seen, it really is cost-neutral. We're able to pay for the bonds and get a lot of benefits, science labs, parking, new tennis courts.
I just wanted the answer to the timeframe. You know, with all due respect, we've already heard the picture.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I asked, I didn't forget, I realize I didn't forget. I did ask Gary Breschew the first time we spoke, he did call the state, we haven't heard yet. I guess we'll get back to you on that also.
Thank you.
Can I just point one thing out in terms of, we talk a lot, we talked a lot about risk tonight, and I understand that. This is a very well-educated public, and it's wonderful to hear your questions. However, it's important to note that there are 19 active agri-science programs in Connecticut, and none of them have failed. And when you couple that with a community who just a very short time ago put together a vote that was a very, very strong support of education in their communities, in terms of the elementary schools, I really do think that that mitigates the risk, and I hope that that helps you to feel more comfortable about this. These programs just aren't out there failing. They've been out there for a long time, they're successful, and they work for kids.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Dave Work Owen, I'm in Washington. I thank everybody, especially on the board and our administrators, for putting this program together. This is an exciting thing. I consider this an emergency vote. This has to happen. Otherwise, I don't know what the future of our school is going to be. I am highly invested in the, in the schools, have been for a long time. I taught here for 35 years and coached 33, at least, in those labs. They're the same labs at the beginning and the end. They do need some work. I broke, I probably helped to break them, yes. But the, you know, we've had two of our children go through school, one is now a teacher in those same labs. The other, the other one is a physical therapist. And I have three grandchildren now in the region who are looking forward to going to that school, and I hope there's a school there. And we have to make sure this passes, we got one shot. You've got to get out everybody that you know to come and vote, so there's a true representation of what the towns feel about this. It's, it's just an emergency situation, so please, get people out and vote. Thank you.
Sorry, a little difference in size here. My name is Susan Kenny Nicholas. I've been really lucky to be part of the Chappagh community for more than 50 years. I graduated from Chappagh in 1975. I started teaching at Chappagh in 1979. Just recently, and I have a son who graduated from Chappagh two years ago. I am a taxpayer, I've lived in New Preston for 30-something years, lived in New Preston most of my life. What I really wanted to say was, we just had a reunion this, this weekend, last weekend, and it was a class of 75, but, and 74 and 73 together, and we decided to have a '70s reunion. And one of the things that came up at this reunion, more often than not, was sadness that our school that we love might disappear. And I have to tell you, I walked in these doors when this building opened, and it was the most exciting part of my life. I see Linda here, she did the same thing, and I know that there's many of you here that felt the same way. We need to have this so that our schools and our towns can be revitalized. We cannot allow this to fall apart. We need this, our children need this, and as taxpayers, we need it so that our homes are worth something. I mean, this is, I can't even say anything else. Thank you all for all your hard work, and I hope that everyone gets out and votes yes very soon.
Mark Lyon from Washington. I also have the privilege of being the first selectman from that town for the last eight years. Been involved in this school issue for Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen for 12. And this is the first opportunity I think we have to have a positive impact on our children's education. We, I've been through this presentation enough, I think I could give it. And it has been questioned, it's been turned upside down, inside out, and examined from every possible angle, and it may not be the perfect plan, but it creates an opportunity for us to put students in our high school, that'll bring us to a student population, that'll allow us to provide a program that we can be proud of. So that's my opinion on it, and it will be discussed at our Board of Selectmen's meeting this Thursday, and we, I hope to have a positive statement to come out from that also. Thank you.
Hi, I'm the aforementioned Linda. Thank you, Sue. The reunion was great, and those, that class of 75, they worked their high knees off, let me tell you.
Do you mind just stating your name and the town that you're in?
I am Linda Abbott, I'm from Bridgewater.
Thank you.
And class of 74, from Chappagh. I love this program in concept tremendously. I am Linda Abbott. I'm from Bridgewater.
Thank you.
And class of 74, from Chapag. I love this program in concept tremendously for a multitude of reasons. There are two things, and by the way, I want to thank all of you for a lot of hard work because I know this has not been a fun project. And it's admirable, and we all appreciate the hard work that you've put into it. I think there are two things that are important, and I think you're hearing them, but they deserve being stated again, that people are concerned with. One is, my home value going up is of no value because if I'm selling my home, I'm leaving town because I can't live here anymore. So that's, the people who are worried about, about costs are concerned about being able to stay here because we all love it so much. My other question is, Pat, when you presented Thursday, you said that there was a lot more to the presentation that had been pared down and that you had sliced and diced this a million different ways. Some of the fears here are about the number of students and the ratio of those students, whether they're core or AgSci. Do you have any other number scenarios other than the 196-30 that you can present to us? And if not, can you develop some? And can you create a couple that are the absolute break-even scenarios? So we know where that line is between revenue coming in and additional cost. Is that clear?
I think Anthony has the answer to that question.
So the, the model that we chose is that break-even scenario. So the 196 and the 30, 196 coming from out of district and the 30 coming within district, assuming inflation, is your break-even model, more or less.
But there were $700,000 of revenue that were not going to be eaten up by the bond with the worst-case scenario.
But that, that's over, true, but it's over 25 years, so you divide that by 25, and it's more or less break-even. I mean, so 196 can be maybe 192, but it's, you're, you know, for, for what you're getting at, I would consider that a break-even model.
Okay. And can you play around with the ratio in that? If it's not 196, if there's 60 students from the Chapag district and there are less from outside, can you change those ratios and give us that, that breaking point also?
We, we can, and we, and we've looked at that. And if we get, if we get less than 196 and more internal, I mean, every, every external student brings 10,000.
Right.
Every internal student brings 3,200. So there's that, there's the tuition differential. So every outside student we lose, we lose 6,800. And you just basically do that math, and you could see how it doesn't, you know, that we really can't go too far below the 196 before we can't cover the costs. So that's what we were looking for when we did the analysis, is where that break-even point is.
And that student ratio, however, could change in the better scenario quite dramatically. And I'm wondering if any of that information can be posted on the website so that people can see those numbers.
We ran, I'd have to look to see what, what we ran, but we did run a max capacity if we had to run, Bob, we have, we ran that model, right? So yes, we could take a look at that.
Can I just speak to that? One of the things you have to understand about after the referendum is set, which is tonight, hopefully before midnight, is that we can no longer advocate, we can only share facts. And after tonight, on the webpages, you're only going to see facts. So you're really not going to see any more numbers of, because somebody can say 196 and 30, those aren't really facts. That's your opinion. Lowering it or raising it, that's your opinion, and we're not allowed to do that anymore. So at this point, what we're giving you is our best guest estimates from people in the field, from research of costs based on what's happened in our district over the last seven years, from population based on Nanawog's population data, and also knowing that we haven't, they haven't done any aggressive recruitment, from what we think we can do to make this program a success. I think Kim said it best before, there are 19 other school districts in the state that are doing this program, that are making the budgets work in a positive favor for them. I can tell you that people who are against this program have called some of the local superintendents, and they have told them that specifically, that yes, we're making positive revenue. So I think all of the information that you're going to get from us, it has been given. We will put it back on the website what we can once our attorney looks at it and says, yes, it's okay. But we have state election commission laws that we have to follow. And basically, we can only really share the information as a school board and as a superintendent that is factual. So that's really how we're going to run with this because we don't want to do anything improper that anyone can say, oh, look what they did. So, you know, I think that's where we are at this point.
Are you saying if you ran more ratios, they would consider that leading rather than informative?
I'm saying that there are people who could think that, yes.
Could I, could I...
Thanks very much, guys.
Gary, would you like to just add to that? Breschew, please?
Yeah, nice. I'm here. What the prohibition is, is that once a referendum question is finalized, i.e. adopted and a date set and a question set, then public resources cannot be utilized to advocate in any way. And resources is defined broadly. It, resources is not simply expenditure of money, but it also could be, for example, students taking flyers home and use of students. There's also specific prohibitions now concerning use of call systems, simply reminding people to vote. So those, you have to be cognizant of that. And the S, the SEC, the State Election Enforcement Commission, will review these complaints on a case-by-case basis. And admittedly, some of the analysis on their part in the decisions is based on their assessment of whether the communication as a whole consists of advocacy or not. So that is, while it's not a prohibition of providing any information at all to the voters, it does have to be, one has to be cautious about it. And the fines, by the way, would be against the individual members of the board, not against the community.
Thank you. Are you all set?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who hasn't had an opportunity to make a statement or ask a question of our experts, of the board, superintendent, principal? If not, is there anyone that would like to speak again? Oh, there you are.
John Boniuro, still from Washington. And I have a comment on Dr. Cosentino's financial restraints that our state is enjoying. And as a footnote, the state is also $65 billion in debt due to extreme and excessive spending. And I don't know if that includes the interest on the bonding. Most of that money is probably bonded also. So adding, I guess adding another 28 million is not too much of a problem. This question is addressed to the attorneys, excuse me. It's been explained, and this was the first condition that the State Board of Ed laid out as far as the referendum. And my understanding is that when the charter was set up, it was set up so that any major decisions, and it's been argued that this is not a fundamental change to the charter. But I would think that each, when it was set up, each town, it was set up so each town would have an equal voice at referendum. And when you consider 66,000 square feet, it's basically a fifth building, fifth facility. You're adding another facility to the four existing. I want to know how that isn't a fundamental change to the, to the charter when you're importing 196 students, most from out of reg, those, all of those are going to be from out of region. Most of them are going to be from out of county, they're going to be from Fairfield County, and how that is not a fundamental change to the original agreement, I just don't understand that.
And we'll have our attorney, Gary, could you respond to that?
First of all, the issue in terms of voting on this referendum clearly falls under Connecticut general statute 10-56 concerning any time a bond or referendum, or even indeed a budget, goes for approval for Region 12. And that is very clearly that your vote for this referendum, which is a bond issue, is by the majority of all of the communities together, not individually separate. Now, as this community knows full well, a year ago, you went through a different type of referendum, which would have been pursuant to 10-47, which has to do with the proposed change to your regionalization plan. You were formed, like all but one of the regions, regional school districts in the state of Connecticut, pursuant to state statute, which allows you to do a regionalization plan, which you did, and you refer to as a charter. It's essentially the same thing, it's, it's how you operate. If you make a change under the law, and again, Region 12 would know better than anyone, that is not incidental, and that's the term used by the Connecticut Supreme Court, then you require approval of a change for a majority of each of the districts, and again, you went through this a year ago. That's not before you right now, first of all. What's before you is a referendum vote. So I take your question is, if I can rephrase it, is should there be a modification to the regionalization plan to allow this plan to go forward? Is that fair, sir?
I thought that the region should have approved the project before they approved the plan.
Okay. In terms of whether or not this is an incidental change, numerous changes have been viewed by the Connecticut courts as allowable and not, and not, frankly, incidental. For example, expanding renovating buildings, all have been seen as not a fundamental change. That's anticipated when you do, in fact, there's a Supreme, there's a court decision on this, when you form a district, it's anticipated you will have to build new buildings, it's anticipated that you will have to renovate buildings, it's anticipated that you'll have to change your programs. In fact, your regionalization plan specifically refers to the fact that even though they suggest certain programs, it's anticipated those programs will change based on the needs of the student body going forward. What you have here is simply a program. You're not changing, if you look at the cases in which it's been viewed as a more than incidental change, it usually involves either the changing of the construction of the district, i.e. buildings located in each community, or the grade setup that we're suddenly doing schools differently. You're not changing your high school. You still have a high school. What you are doing is you're establishing a program in your high school, which frankly has a lot of overlap from the current programs you provide. You provide many of these courses, you'll provide, you'll be providing some additional courses. And the review of that, I would see that as an incidental change. You're not changing, fundamentally changing. You have a high school going in, it's located here, when you're done, you'll still have a high school here, it'll still be located here. The fact that you may be offering a program that's differently, for example, if you were to offer, you have French and Spanish, I'm assuming? If you were to offer Portuguese as a third language next year, I don't think anyone would argue that's a fundamental change to your charter. What you're proposing here is offering courses in agri-science. Again, those are program change, those are, you're not changing structurally what your district is. You still have an elementary school in each of your three towns, and you'll still have a high school, middle school located right here. The fact that you're, you're changing the building, that you're renovating or expanding it, has long been seen as frankly, an anticipated change. This school district, Region 12, and the Board of Education, is empowered, like every other Board of Education in the state of Connecticut, to make decisions on its behalf. Its restriction is if it changes the regionalization plan in a fundamental manner.
Attorney Breschew, thank you very much for clarifying the question. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment or has a question for the board or our experts? And if not, I'll... Anthony, did you want to say something?
I'll wait.
Okay.
I'm from Bridgewater, and I would suggest that when, when we arrive at 20, 21, and half of the children in the school district up here in the high school are from out of the region, and by, in 10 years from now, when 75% are from out of the region, I would suggest that's a fundamental change. And I would also, we would be in a situation where those 75% of children have no representation on the board. Now, I, I mean, maybe, I'm not a lawyer, but that sounds like a fundamental change to me. Would you like to make a comment?
Are you asking a question?
That's a question.
Okay.
That's not a fundamental change when you have 75% of the population that doesn't have representation?
Not in terms of the regionalization plan. The Board of Education, like every other Board of Education in the state, has the authority to accept students from outside the district on a tuition basis. And they have the authority also to set that tuition, and frankly, they have policies in place that already do that. In terms of representation, every student that's in a school district is by definition represented by the Board of Education of that school district, regardless of where you actually live.
They have no representative on the board. Representatives of Bridgewater?
If you have a question, is that a question or a statement?
Yeah, it's a statement.
Okay, thank you.
You cut me off again?
I'm not cutting you off, sir.
Yeah, I mean, they, the, the kids from Danbury, and New Fairfield, and Newtown, and Brookfield who come here and take the Ag program have no representative on the Board of Education because their representatives on the Board of Education are from Brookfield, Roxbury, and Bridgewater. That's pretty simple.
I understand that, sir, but frankly, that's a reality in Connecticut, given the rise, particularly, I'm from the Hartford area, given the rise of magnet schools and transferring, that happens in virtually every district in the state. We have, in my own town, we have over 100 students from another, from Hartford who attend, and their representation are the elected Board of Education officials in our community. That's simply how it works. I understand it's a different model from frankly, the one that I grew up with. But in terms of Connecticut and the loosening of students going from district to district across town lines, that's our new reality.
Emily, did you have something you wanted to add to that conversation?
I don't have the mic.
No, you do need the mic, please. Thanks.
I would just like to say that I think my own personal opinion is on this board, and however long it lasts, that any child that becomes a Chapag student, AgScience or our own, will be represented by this board. You come to Chapag, we're here to represent you.
Well, I see that's the truth. And you certainly don't represent the taxpayer, that's for sure.
Hang on, yes. Let's end this on a positive note.
Judy Gore from Washington. I was in your place over a generation ago, and I know how hard you work. And thank you so much for coming up with this wonderful, exciting plan. And I will tell you that my bias is in terms of educating children. And that's what we need to think about. Money is important, of course, but representing our kids and what they need in the world is the most important. And thank you for what you did.
Hi, I know it's almost 10 o'clock, so I'll be very brief. My name is Tim Loughlin. I am a resident of Washington. My wife and I bought our house about two years ago, and at 32, I would classify us as the young families everyone keeps talking about. And I think it's just important for me to say today that this program really represents the best hope for not only our school but our community. And when we look in a worst-case scenario at what is essentially a $36 increase in our taxes in a bad year, to get a school that is going to last for a long time, and to really get an economic development driver that provides not only a place for our children to learn and my future children to learn, but at the same time, something that will increase and sustain the value of my home, that's very important. And I think it is commendable that both the Board of Education and the selectmen here today really are thinking about the bigger picture. And I encourage my fellow residents... And I encourage my fellow residents to vote for this important plan. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Yes, Anthony, you had one more?
Just one very final quick comment. There was a question about the risk associated with this. Just to put this in perspective, our expectations are it'll, we will not reach our, our goal, our target enrollment from, for seven years from today. So we've got seven years of runway to figure it out. And when we look at NanoWAG as our guiding light here and say, well, how successful do we need to be compared to them, using that as a, as a, as a benchmark, we do not need to be better than NanoWAG at attracting our students. We only need to be seventy percent as successful as they've been in getting students out of their catchment town, which is about the same size as ours, a little bit bigger. It's about eight thousand. So we don't need to be as good. We need to be almost as good at NanoWAG. And we've got the new facility, and, and we have the advantages. So when we talk about a business risk, I think it is a quite manageable and a doable proposition for this region. So I'll end with that.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to moderate this discussion. And I'll send it back to you, Mr. Board Chair, to wrap up the meeting.
Well, for those of you who are still here, thank you. That some of our speakers didn't drive you out, I appreciate that. So as we wrap up this presentation and this public hearing, as it says, three things to take away from tonight and from this proposal is that our students, the Region Twelve Board of, the Region Twelve students will get more from this program than anyone else. Our communities in the region will be enriched by a vibrant high school going forward, and that this program is self-funding and pays for our needed science labs. So thank you very much for attending. What's happening next is we're going to immediately go into a Board of Education meeting, and I anticipate that we will set the date of the referendum, which I anticipate to be November ten, two thousand and fifteen. I would ask you all to please come out and vote. Thank you very much. Thank you for attending. Oh, I also want to thank our guests, Mike- I want to also thank our guests, Mr. Booz and Doug Gillette, and our attorney Gary Brochue for attending. So-